Welcome. Welcome to the special and annual town meeting. This is the 388th annual town meeting for the Town of Situate. Thank you all for coming. A quorum being present, I'd ask the meeting to come to water and all stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm advised by the town clerk that the warrant has properly been posted and served. I'd entertain a motion to dispense with the formal reading of the warrant. We have a motion. Second, all those in favor of waiving the reading of the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It's unanimous vote. I have nominated Peter Toppen to serve as assistant moderator and would entertain a motion to ratify his appointment. All those in favor, please get a motion first. Motion, second. We have a motion, second. All those in favor of ratifying the appointment of Peter as the assistant moderator, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It's unanimous vote. I'm informed by the clerk that the tellers have been sworn in. Those tellers are Anne Breen, Richard Harding, Irene Murray, Kylie Stormdooly, Linda Plowman, Kathy McGowan, Chris Malachi, Carolyn Sones, Penny Scott Pipes, and Allison Short. Thank you. Now, a couple of things. First of all, you should have two handouts tonight. One is the advisory committee booklet. Everything you need to know about this meeting and the articles are here with all of the backup information you need. So if you don't have one, get one. Second one is a blue book from the Situate Public Schools, which gives a detail of the school budget and a lot of the background of how that's been developed. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to memorialize those who have served the town and have passed since our last getting together. Those people are Brendan Lynch, who was a treasurer and collector, passed on December 4th. Antonia Tony Snee, librarian, passed in January. Peter Scott is from the police department, passed also in January. And Nicholas Waterman, who was an election worker. I'd ask for a moment of silence in memory of those who served the town. Thank you. Now, we have just a couple of announcements. One is, you'll see that there was posted, as you came in, a sign with a QR code for the Mordecai Laken property survey. The committee is soliciting survey results and asking for people's input on what to do with the Mordecai Laken property. You can find that either by using the QR codes or if you go on the town website, you'll find that there is a form to fill out for the survey monkey form. Other announcements, don't forget, we have a ship-shaped day on May 4th. Everybody turn out to help and clean up the sideways, sidewalls, yeah, the roadways and the sidewalks and get the town to look great for the summer. That's on May 4th. We also have another town meeting on April 29th, which will be the discussion of the building of a new school. That is not up for tonight. That's going to be a separate, special town meeting. And lastly, we have the election on May?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. And that will include both the positions that are up for election as well as a vote on the school override. So important stuff coming up. Now, at this point, I'd like to introduce, or have introduced, some of the committees who participate here in town meeting. And I select these committees to be introduced because each of them has a role either by law or by town bylaw with respect to recommendations to the meeting as we go along. So we'll start with the advisory committee. I'd ask Elise Russo, Chair, to introduce the members of the advisory.
Hi, I'm Elise Russo, the current Chair of the Advisory Committee. This is Jamie Gilmore, former Chair of the Advisory Committee and longstanding member. Patrice Metro, Connor Doherty, Linda Ferguson, Missy Seidel, Jerry Kelly, another former Chair of the Advisory Committee, Mark DeCosimo, and Dan McGuigan, the Assistant Chair of the Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would ask Mara Curran, Chair of the Select Board, to introduce the Select Board and the others sitting with the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mara Curran, Chair of the Select Board. To my right, we have Nancy Holt, our Finance Director, Jim Bedrow, our Town Administrator, our Vice Chair Andrew Goodrich, Susan Harrison, our Clerk, Karen Connolly, Karen Canfield, and on the end is our new legal representation, Brian Bertram.
Thank you. Next, I would ask for an introduction of the members of the Capital Planning Committee by Chris Kasia, Chair of that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Chris Kasia, Chair of the Capital Planning. Tonight, Mike Gibson is here with me. Other members would be Richard Taft, Ollie Fuller, Tom O'Grady, and Dr. Carrie Borkowski.
Thank you, Chris. Next is the Planning Board. I'd ask Patricia Lambrecht, Chair of the Planning Board, to introduce her board and staff.
Good evening, I'm Patricia Lambrecht, Chair of the Planning Board. Rebecca Lewis is my Assistant Chair, and members are Steva Pritchett, Anne Burbine, and Patrick Nybauer.
Thank you. And next, we have the Community Preservation Committee. Is Mr. Fenely here to introduce the members of the Community Preservation Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The committee consists of myself, Dan Fenely, Skylar Chick, the Vice Chair of the Committee, Suzanne Brennan, Meg Stillman, Anne Burbine, Jill Caffrey, Mike Connor, Penny Scott Pipes, and last but not least, Jack Whitaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Now, as I said, I introduced, asked that those committees be introduced because of the particular role that they have. Obviously, there are a number of other committees. One thing I hope that everyone appreciates is, all of these committees consist of volunteers. They're unpaid. They work, they learn the particulars of the area that they're in, and without them, thank you, without them, the town would not run. And I hope everyone has appreciation of what's going on, and I'm sorry I missed the school committee. They are equally important. We're going to put you right up at the, on top of the.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Peter Gates. I'm stepping in the place of Nicole Brandalini, who is representing Situate at the National School Board Association in New Orleans as a presenter and attendee. I'm the Vice Chair of the current Situate School Committee. I also have with me Secretary Dr. Carrie Borowski and Janice Lindblom, as well as Superintendent of Schools, Bill Burkhead, and our Business Finance Director, Dr. Tom Robb. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to make note that we have here Stephanie Pharoah, who is providing the closed captioning, so anyone who has any other difficulty can follow the meeting through the closed caption. And last but not least, where's Blue?
On the back.
All right. Someone asked me to introduce Blue. He's the newest member of the Police Department. He's a comfort dog, and apparently he's going somewhere else for comfort, so we'll get, move along with that. Now, I mentioned about volunteers. Tonight, I'd like to pause for a minute to recognize Mara Curran. Mara is finishing her term 10 years on the Board of Selectmen. Before that, she spent another 11 years on the School Committee, on the Advisory Committee. So we've got 20 years of service. You know how many meetings that is? You know how many phone calls that is? And would like to show, the meeting to show their appreciation for all that Mara has done Now, I see we have our Congressman and our Representative, and I think they have something to say with respect to Chairman Curran's service. And our, and our State Senator. So why don't we start at the federal level? We'll, we'll start with Congressman Keating. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Toomey, and thank you all for participating in the basic and most pure form of democracy town meeting. As someone that's been on the other side of this many times, I think the hallmark is it's pure democracy, but the most treasured moments are moments of brevity. So I am going to very, be, be very brief, but I'm going to share with you a record of Congress, this congressional record. This is something that's voted on by the House, that's a permanent record of the House of Representatives in our country, and it honors a member of our Select Board, Mara Curran. So if I can share this with you, I'll try and read it quickly. For over two decades, Mara Curran has served as a pillar of the Situate community, serving on the Situate School Committee, the Advisory Committee, and for the past decade on the Select Board. Mara's parents, late Samuel and Mary Kavanaugh Cashman, instilled in their daughter to never hesitate standing up for a release as long as she was respectful in her disagreements. Mara's pointed to this as the greatest lesson she learned from her parents, and the people of Situate have benefited greatly from the guiding principle throughout her service to that town. A tireless advocate on the School Committee in 2005, throughout her term in the School Committee, Mara worked with her colleagues to maintain the quality of education in Situate in the face of economic challenges at the time. As her tenure in the School Committee came to a close, Mara once again stepped up to serve the town on the Advisory Committee, working countless evenings to ensure that the town meeting attendees were adequately prepared for the annual and special town meetings. In 2014, Mara was elected to fill an unexpired term on what was then known as the Board of Selectmen. For the first time in 12 years, there was a woman on the board, and by the end of the decade, the board was renamed Select Board by the town meeting, and its members were majority female for the first time in Situate's history. Under Mara's leadership on the Select Board, Situate built a new public safety building, a senior center, athletic field complex, and the Gates Middle School. Additionally, the town renovated its library and saw significant investments in replacing and improving water and sewer infrastructure. And if I can interject some good news to share with you all, just over three weeks ago, President Biden signed an earmark that I put in to the House as part of the appropriations law that gives nearly $1 million for the water treatment facility here. And in conclusion, Mara, not seeking reelection, Mara will step down from her Select Board after 10 years of dedicated service. However, the work that Mara accomplished during her time in the Situate Select Board, School Committee, and Advisory Board will leave a lasting impact for many years to come. The Town of Situate has benefited greatly from the sacrifices made by Mara, her husband Sean, and their daughters Lindsay and Samantha, as they worked around her attendance at Monday night School Committee meetings, Tuesday night Select Board meetings, and Thursday night Advisory meetings. I'm just so proud to present this to Mara, and I think she's a great example of what our town, what our state, and what our country is about in giving public service at a time when it's so necessary. Mara, congratulations.
Next up, we have Patrick Kearney, our Representative in State Government.
Good evening, everybody. Patrick Kearney, thank you all for being here tonight. Before we kicked it off, you know, thank you, Congressman, for being here. Really cool to have that read into the congressional record. We also do something similar at the State House. I'm joined here by my colleague in government, Senator Patrick O'Connor, who's behind me. He has one of these from the Senate as well. But for myself, I can say that when I first took office five years ago, Mara has been a tremendous resource, tremendous partner to local elected officials, to state elected officials, to our federal delegation, to really make things happen here in town, and this town is a better place because of Mara's service. So in recognition from me and the entire House of Representatives, myself and Speaker Mariano and Patrick O'Connor in the Senate wanted to give a extended best wishes in retirement, and thank you so much for your service.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Pat O'Connor, the State Center for Situate and most of the South Shore. First off, just wanted to thank everybody for being here, and especially those who are serving in a volunteer role to try and make the Town of Situate an even better place. I have such a great honor of being able to work with Mara throughout the time in which I first got elected in 2016, so it kind of ran parallel. And you have a rock star in Mara Curran. What she's been able to do in this community during very challenging times, and one thing that wasn't mentioned was the pandemic. You know, we had no playbook for what's been happening and what could have happened during that period of time, but really, you had amazing leadership here in Situate that was able to work through the pandemic and actually have Situate come out stronger than it had entered it. And in addition to that, her care and concern for infrastructure, for public safety, for education, for our beaches, for infrastructure when it comes to seawall-related stuff, Mara Curran's just been all over these issues. And doing this on a volunteer basis, as so many of the other people who are here tonight, is really commendable. A lot of times, this job is thankless when things go bad, and it's glorious when things are great. But it takes that even-keeled approach to really navigate through some of the very challenging circumstances that come and be able to unite the town. And I've always thought people like Mara turn the Town of Situate into a community, and that's something that I'll be forever grateful for, for her partnership and her leadership in this community on that level. And as Patrick had said, we read into the record, so you're officially part of the congressional record, the Massachusetts State House of Representatives record, and the Senate record. And we've had, read into the record in recognition of all of your years of service to the Town of Situate as a member of the School Committee, Select Board, and your invaluable leadership to the community. And the Massachusetts State Senate wishes nothing but best wishes for continued success. I know that this is a end of your official capacity, but your fingerprints are all over this town in such a positive way, and I'm sure you'll continue to do that. So thank you, Mara.
Thank you. I'm so touched, honestly. I'm honored that the three of you joined tonight and joined us, but I, I want to make it very clear that nothing gets done in this town without everybody that's in this room and at this table, and our department heads, and our committees, the 35 committees. It's never about one person, and that's what makes this town great, and that's what moves us along. And it's been my honor, and I thank my family, Sean, Lindsay, and Samantha, and how excited will they be that they're on the congressional record as well? So thank you, Congressman Keating, and thank you truly. It's been an honor to serve Situate, and you're in good hands. I can assure you that. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Jim Toomey. I'm the moderator. It's my job to chair the meeting, decide questions of order. Let me take a minute or two just to go through the process and talk about the, how the meeting will run. The Town of Situate has two branches of government, the executive branch, represented here by the School Committee and the Board of Select, the Select Board. And they are, and then we have the legislative branch, which is you, the town meeting. The voters of the town come together here, and this is the town legislature. The executive branch make requests to you in the form of the warrant. These requests are presented article by article, and it is up to the voters here to review these executive branch requests and to make decisions on them. The decision-making process is here with the vote. And as citizen legislators, you have the option here to question the executive branch and get answers to your questions. You may not always get satisfactory answers, you may not always get answers, but you can take whatever information you get, and by that information, decide how to vote on the issues that are presented in the, in the articles. I'd like to take special note of the important friend you have here in the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee is a standing committee appointed by the moderator, and they, by law, have to review every article and make a recommendation to the town meeting as, as to their view of how the town should vote. None of that is binding, but I can tell you, a lot of time and effort goes into that. The members of the committee break down into different parts of the budget, review with the department heads, all of the issues that are, that are presented in the warrant, and make an informed decision before they vote on the recommendation that they make here. So, so it's not just the views of somebody, it's the views, it's the views of someone who does a detailed inspection and review of the issues. And they're very well-informed, and I would urge you to listen very carefully to their We have certain procedural rules that we follow here. Basically, what we use is a parliamentary manual called Town Meeting Time. The idea here is not to make it complicated, we want to make sure everybody can participate and everybody understands what's going on. If you have a question about the process, about what's being voted on, what the effect of a vote is, and you're not, and it's unclear, get up and ask. I recognize you if you go to the microphone, and we'll get you an answer to the, so you're clear on what's, what's before the meeting and what we're, we're taking, asking you to take action on. In terms of the layout here, we have non-voters, of which we only have a couple who sit over on the bleachers. Ordinarily, only registered voters may address the meeting. If someone is a non-registered voter and they get up to speak, generally, I'd recognize them, and unless someone has an objection, we would allow them to speak. But they do that as a privilege, not as a right. Town elected, enrolled voters are hereby right and have the right to speak. The process is to speak, you rise, come to a microphone, and you wait to be recognized. This shows respect for those present and helps keeping the minutes. We ask that each speaker identify their name and their address for purposes of keeping a record of the meeting. If you're here as a representative of a board or a group or a neighborhood, please identify your representative capacity so we know what role you have. The process is, first, that the, a motion is made with a second. We need to have a motion, and that is, defines what the topic of conversation is, is going to be. An article sponsor will have up to 10 minutes to present the emotion, and they need not use the full amount of time. We remind everybody that the proverb, "Brevity is the soul of wit." So brevity wins more often than long-windedness. I ask people go to the microphones, the, we can adjust the, the volume at each microphone. If there is any issue getting the microphone, we do have someone who has a mobile mic that they can bring to you. So if you need, need any assistance in that, that way, just raise your hand and we'll, we'll get a microphone to you. As people speak, I ask that they confine their speech to the issues that are in, before the meeting at the time, address the specific issues that are in that particular warrant article. No personal attacks, no, no attacks on people's motives, and no talk of personalities. You can ask any questions about any article through me. I'll try to get you an answer. Again, what you do with the information that you get is, is up to you. We have a process that if debate gets lengthy and you're tired of debate, you can either suffer in silence or you can offer a motion, "I move the question." This requires a two-thirds vote, and with a two-thirds vote, we would, that would end debate, and we would move to a vote on the, on the question. One caution, we don't allow someone to make a speech, have the last word, and then say they moved the question. That's just not a fair approach. So if you have something to say about the article, that's a separate issue than, than moving the question. Generally, I will try to declare the results of a vote based on a voice vote. It may be necessary at times either to have a standing vote or, and have people rise, and sometimes we have to have a teller count. That takes time, but we want to make sure we get it right. Anytime there's a question on how I have called a vote, if you think I have not properly heard what the, the vote is, then seven people can rise, and we will take a counted vote with the tellers to make sure there's no question on the voting. In our bylaws, it allows me to even call a two-thirds vote. Again, seven voters rise if they question my decision that a vote is passed by two-thirds, and then we will have a counted vote to check on, to make sure that, that the call was correct. The acoustics in this room aren't bad, are bad, so do your best. If you have to move around, move around. Please silence your cell phones. And with that, we're ready to go to work. So we will start with the agenda for the special town meeting. We have four articles in the special town meeting, three of which we, the Selectmen have proposed to be in a consent agenda. The way the consent agenda will, will work is, these are matters that are pretty routine and generally follow from one year to the other pretty much in, in the same way. What we would do is propose a vote on those as a group. This requires a two-thirds vote because we'll take items out of order. But if anyone has any desire to have questions or speak to any of the warrant articles that we have in the consent agenda, I will read each of those articles and just say, "Hold." We will then remove that item from the consent agenda and have a separate discussion on that article like the other articles. So the three articles that are now in the consent agenda are Article One, which is for the payment of unpaid bills of a prior year; Article Two, which is budget reconciliations, this is balancing the budget based upon information that has occurred between the last meeting and, and this meeting; and then Article Three is the Community Preservation Additional Set Asides. This is a balancing of the various kinds of accounts that the Community Preservation Committee has to oversee that's required by statute. That changes as a result of the amount of money that comes into the town. I haven't heard anyone hold any of those. This is your last chance. There's no holds, so we will move to the consent agenda, and I would ask for a motion from the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Curran? Ms. Curran?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to take Articles One, unpaid bills for prior years; Two, fiscal year '24 budget reconciliations; and Three, the community preservation additional set-asides, out of order, and that they be passed by consent in accordance with the motion shown on the consent agenda distributed this evening.
We have a second. We have a second. Give us a brief explanation of...
So we ask you to approve this motion so that we move forward. If you have any objections, please speak now and put a hold on any of those three. Other than that, the Board, the Select Board recommends approval of this motion.
Okay. And I'd ask for the recommendation of the advisory committee.
The advisory committee recommends this as well.
Without any further discussion, I'll bring this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I declare it a unanimous vote. That brings us next to Article Four. Ms. Canfield has a motion for us on Article Four, which is changing the town clerk from elected to an appointed position.
I move to change the town clerk from elected to an appointed position by the method listed in the printed advisory committee booklet.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Ms. Canfield.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The question before town meeting on this article is an extremely important one. Changing from the longstanding tradition of electing our town clerk to an appointed position fundamentally changes the dynamics of the relationship between this position and the community. As with any elected position, if the voters are unhappy with the discharge of the duties performed, they could vote that person out. However, this particular position requires a level of expertise and professionalism that may or may not be found in a person seeking an election in this role. Without a competent town clerk, the community runs the risk of having poorly-run elections and improper oversight in portent licenses and other matters. There are 351 municipalities in Massachusetts, and currently, 153, or 45 percent, have appointed town clerk positions. This trend is growing as the responsibilities of this office become more and more complex. Situate has been extremely fortunate to have a long line of very qualified and very dedicated professionals serving as our town clerk. And I would like to, with your permission, Mr. Moderator, take just a brief moment to acknowledge Kathy Gardner, our current town clerk. We all know that Kathy has set the bar very high for excellence in managing the town clerk's role. Kathy, your dedication and expertise are deeply appreciated. But she's threatening to waive us, and when that day happens, the Select Board feels that it would be much better for our community to have a fully-vetted professional hired for this role going forward. For this reason, the Select Board voted four-zero to support this article.
Thank you. Next, I would ask for the recommendation of the advisory committee. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you all, first off, for attending tonight's meeting. The UConn game comes on at nine. Hopefully, we will be done by that point. I also want to thank Kathy "Nee" Colen Gardner for her tireless expertise and her expert service to the town, as well as Andrea Gillis and Paul Orenberger. Article Four addresses the change of the clerk position from an elected position to an appointed position. You know, people argue that it's accountability versus experience. The ever-changing responsibilities of the town clerk's office really requires increased skills, and we felt an appointed clerk would go a long way to the selection of the most qualified candidate. So the advisory committee voted eight to nothing to support this article.
Thank you. You have the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, and the advisory committee. Is there further discussion? Gentlemen in the center, mic.
Good evening, Lincoln Heineman. I am Chair of the town's Bylaw Review Commission, and also, and live in town, at 673 First Parish Road. I rise to make the report of the Bylaw Review Commission on this article. The Bylaw Review Commission pursuant to the scope as laid out in the bylaws themselves reviewed only this portion of the proposed change that refers specifically to the change in the bylaws and not in the review, not in the charter, not the proposed charter change, and by a vote of two to one, voted to recommend passage of that portion of the warrant article.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Richard Lambert, 14 Alexander Place. I have a number of reasons why we should stick with the elected town clerk. Having an elected town clerk is a practice at the town of Situate which should make every effort to preserve. It has stood the test of time because it works. An elected town clerk has many pragmatic advantages over an appointed town clerk. An elected town clerk is a department head and independent in their actions, and knows what the staffing needs are, and can appoint all staff to ensure the work is done. Town clerk in their role as registrar... The town clerk in their role as a registrar or voter must maintain the sanctity of the ballot. And Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 19, recognizes the town clerk's necessity to choose their staff. Electing a town clerk also avoids the appearance of any cronyism or politics that an appointed town clerk could. While I have not seen any instances of this happening in Situate, I worked for 36 years for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and have firsthand knowledge of such things happening. Furthermore, town clerks have a sensitive role in the election administration and town meetings, which would be ill-served by being beholden to an appointed board whose officials are up for reelection. This was a concern that led to the creation of a civil service. The town clerk's office is a hybrid of the town and Commonwealth's responsibilities. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts General Laws is the, provides the town clerk with their job description. The town clerk's office could function less efficiently if run either by either entity on their own. An elected town clerk is directly accountable to the voters of Situate, and it serves at the will of the voters. This is extremely important during town elections, when maintaining the independence of the office is vital. An appointed town clerk could come to believe they are beholden to the appointing board, which could create inherent conflicts or an appearance of improbity even when none exists. The town, the election of the town clerk involves an electorate of many thousands of voters as opposed to an appointment by a board. Elected town clerks are very service-oriented. They often are more accommodating to townspeople who elected them, providing service and/or assistance anytime. An elected town clerk precludes the appointing board from having to supervise them, leaving the appointed board to maintain their other job duties. An elected town clerk can be removed by the voters during any election for any reason. Elected town clerks have to have employment, tend to have employment longevity that offers them, affords them on the job training. They can attend conferences, gaining information and knowledge that will add to their wealth of knowledge regarding what is required by the law to do the job. An appointing board also creates an additional level of management. Again, as a 36-year Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I can state unequivocally that an additional layer of management has never resulted in an increased efficiency, ever. With the ever-changing political landscape we in this country are facing, one of the most important duties we can safeguard in this democracy is the right to choose who we elect to operate the Situate government. Thank you.
Is there further discussion?
Ann Burbine, 10 Pennycrest Road. In the years that I have lived in this town, I have known the four moderators that go back to 1972. They are, in fact, the official greeters of the town of Situate, and they are important people. We need them. Our elections are so incredibly important, it cannot be left to an appointed person. I will not reiterate what Mr. Lambert said, but I will tell you, this is probably one of the most important positions in this town. We need secure elections. You are concerned maybe that somebody will run for this office that won't be prepared? I seriously doubt that you want to take on the challenge. This is something, someone in government, whatever. But again, this is the most important elected position in this town, and it isn't broken, so we don't need to fix it.
Further discussion? Seeing no one at the mics, we'll call for a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to change the town clerk from elected to appointed, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I think the nays have it. Just to be sure, let's take a standing vote. All those in favor, please rise. Okay, thank you. All those that can sit down now. All those opposed, please rise. Okay, clearly, the motion fails. The clerk will remain as an elected position, and that will not go forward. And that, with that, we have concluded the special town meeting, and I hereby declare this special town meeting dissolved. We now move to the annual town meeting. And again, first order of business will be a consent agenda. Same routine as we went through for the special town meeting. I will read off each of the articles that are proposed to be as part of the consent agenda. If anyone wants to pull that out, a particular article out for discussion, or for questions, or for a separate vote, simply speak out, say, "Hold," as I read through the list. We'll take that item out and have that addressed separately. So the items now that are proposed for the consent agenda are as follows. Article One, compensation of elected officials. Article Two, reports of boards and committees. Article Five, the Waterways Enterprise Fund Budget. Article Six, the Golf Course Enterprise Budget. Article Seven, the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Budget. Article Eight, the Transfer Station Enterprise Budget. Article Nine, the Water Enterprise Fund Budget. Article Ten, stabilization fund excess levy capacity. Article Eleven, the revolving fund limits. Article Thirteen, the Community Preservation Reconciliations. And Article Fifteen, Chapter 91 liability. Not having heard anyone hold them, we will treat all of those in the same consent agenda. I'd ask for a motion from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to take Articles One, compensation of elected officials; Two, reports of boards and committees; Five, Waterways Enterprise Fund Budget; Six, Golf Course Enterprise Fund Budget; Seven, Wastewater Enterprise Fund Budget; Eight, Transfer Station Enterprise Budget; Nine, Water Enterprise Fund Budget; Ten, Stabilization Fund Excess Levy Capacity; Eleven, Revolving Fund Limits; Thirteen, Community Preservation Reconciliations; and Fifteen, Mass General Law, Chapter 91 Liability, out of order, and that it be passed by consent in accordance with the motions shown on the consent agenda distributed this evening.
Is there a second? Second? Motion is seconded.
The Select Board voted four to zero in favor of this motion.
Thank you. We have the recommendation of the advisory committee.
The advisory committee recommends passage of this.
Thank you. Okay. Being no one at the mics, we will proceed to a vote on this issue. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. It's a unanimous vote. Next, we will move to Article Three and Article Four, which are the essential financial articles that you'll be acting on for the next year here in town. Before we get to the specifics of the articles, we'd like to get a brief overview of the budget process, the finances of the town, and what's gone into the budget. So I'd like to start with the Board of Selectmen. If the Chair, the Select Board, if the Chair could give us a summary of what's gone into the budget, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll try to move quickly here. Before I move on, I just want to give a sincere thanks to the many, many dedicated town employees that sit before me this evening. Without you, our town administrator and his excellent staff, all of the other elected and appointed boards, the hundreds of volunteers who make up our 35 committees, and of course, my fellow board members, so much gratitude to everybody here in Situate for the dedication that you bring to your jobs every day, and it's because of all of you that we're able to move along so many initiatives in this town. It's a busy town. And I'm pleased to report that Situate is in excellent financial health. Year over year, we continue to put forth a balanced budget with careful fiscal management led by Jim Nancy and Pan Avatabaly and their respective staffs. You should be proud of the work that they do to ensure we obtain the best market rates for borrowing to support the many, many public projects that we have completed, have implemented, and that we continue to design. We maintain a AA+ bond rating in our auditor's report that the operations of Situate remain stable. We continue to see growth in our stabilization funds with an approximate balance of $11 million across them all, which are dollars set aside for future emergency and unforeseen issues. That is all great news, but I want to take a moment also to share with you some other accomplishments and projects that are in the works, that are led by my board members, their respective committee chairs, and also department heads, that are notable to highlight. In 2023, we had a record year of grant awards, and the trend continues in 2024. Our staff secured over $3 million in grants, not loans, grants. That means we don't have to pay it back. These grants support many, many projects, specifically including the long-awaited renourishment of Minut Beach, the Clean Vessel Act grant to help keep our harbor clean, and several water treatment plant grants, all which help offset the burden that falls upon us, the taxpayers. Our senior center received accreditation from the Senior Center Accreditation National Council on Aging for its outstanding services. Congratulations to that staff. And we saw the completion and advancement of several projects surrounding our harbor, such as completing the installation of the new town marina docks and pilings, advancing to the design stages to fortify Cole Parkway from flooding, and we are in the permitting phase of the redevelopment of the Situate Harbor Community Building area to convert that into a beautiful park to be enjoyed by all. Our Recreation Department, with funding from CPC, completed the rehabilitation of the central fields, improving play for our softball and soccer athletes, and our beloved lighthouse underwent significant repairs and renovations. And I am happy to report that contractors are scheduled to return on April 22nd to begin the final touches of grounding and painting, so stay tuned for those updates, weather-dependent, and an announcement to celebrate turning that light back on. There are many, many more that are outlined in the annual report. I encourage you all to grab one on your way out, they're on the way out on both sides. And in that report, you will also see summaries from each of the... And in that report, you will also see summaries from each of the committee chairs and board chairs on the progress of their respective committees throughout the year. And this evening, you have articles before you. We have submitted a capital plan that totals $22 million with the projects for the schools and the town side. Some notable projects that Mr. Goodrich will cover are the design and engineering for sewer expansion in the North Situate Business District, a $4 million request to engineer the design of the next section of the Oceanside Seawall, and the continued replacement of our water mains as we focus on improving the treatment and distribution of our water supply. Additional highlights include a $99 million operating budget, a request to rehabilitate the tennis courts at the high school, zoning articles to slightly amend our zoning to comply with the State Multifamily Zoning Act for our Green Bush and North Situate villages. And I also want to take the time to thank our Financial Forecasting Committee that includes members from our schools, capital planning advisory, Select Board, and our Town Finance Team for working together this year to find a path to continue to invest in our town. And thank you to the Advisory Board for their diligent work in what is probably the biggest advisory booklet I have seen in my 20 years of serving the town, and we will let them explain why it is so large, but great information in there. And thank you for attending tonight, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to move this town forward.
Thank you. Next, we would ask Superintendent Burkhead to give us a brief overview of the School Committee budget.
Good evening, everyone. When Mr. Boudreau saw that I had two pages, he said, "That's way too long." But I told him it's 16 font because of my bad eyes, so it won't be long. But I'm honored to be here tonight. The budget process represents true collaboration in the form of partnerships and relationships through building trusts, while developing a responsible budget reflective of good stewardship of the taxpayers' hard-earned money. I want to thank the Situate Public Schools staff and administration, the school committee, the capital planning committee, the finance and advisory committee, the Select Board, members of the Financial Forecast Committee, and the Town Administrator and Finance Director for all their hard work, grit, and insight into this very comprehensive budget process. The Situate Public Schools budget is a reflection of the school community's priorities. Last year, our community collaborated on an intensive strategic planning process that set our vision for the next five years. The budget before you tonight reflects three strategic key objectives of that work. One, teaching, learning, and leading. Two, communication and community partnerships. Three, finance facilities, personnel, and technology. The school committee's proposed budget is $51,327,680. This proposed budget represents an increase from 2023 in the amount of $2,024,896, which represents a 4.1 increase. It includes the $47,229,20 contribution from the town, as well as $4,98,651 from grants and revenue. The majority of the Situate Public Schools budget is specifically targeted toward instruction and supporting students. Of that, 80% represents costs related to district salaries and personnel. Some key enhancements to this year's budget that support our students include staffing to continue to support favorable class size and elective offerings for the district, additional funding to maintain the physical plant at Jenkins, Wapatac, Gates, and Situate High School. Two years ago, three years ago, excuse me, we implemented a $250,000 operational line item to support our maintenance, and that has increased this year to approximately $300,000, on top of what is contributed by the town in capital to maintain our buildings. An additional funding for a computer technician, an increased investment for continuous improvement in the curriculum and technology with the replacement of our math curriculum, grade six through 12. In an effort to be fully transparent regarding our FY '25 School Committee budget, we have provided a comprehensive blue booklet that you see around. Please make sure you get one if you don't have one already, and we'd like you to take one home tonight. We appreciate the town of Situate's continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we would ask for an overview from the Chair of the Advisory Committee, just in general, what's going on into their work in terms of the capital plan and the budget.
Thank you. Really, I just want to echo what Moore said about the commitment and the dedication of the town employees, because the department heads come and meet with us separately from their meetings with the Select Board, separately from their meetings with Jim Boudreau, so they really have to give a lot of time in order to bring everybody up to speed and to understand what the important issues are in their departments, and I just want to thank all of them for doing that. It makes our job a lot easier. We do meet every week, beginning now earlier than usual ever, actually, September timeframe, and we meet weekly up until about now. We also meet with the Capital Planning Committee and the other heads of the committees who are represented here in this plan. As to why the book is as fat as it is, I have to say that I have to just thank the Planning Department for the zoning bylaw changes, which is what helped to fatten up the book this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will move to Article three. I'd ask for a motion on Article three, which is the Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Goodrich.
It's a lengthy motion, so bear with me. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $22,575,255 for the purpose of funding the cost of the capital improvement plan submitted in accordance with Section 6-6 of the Situate Town Charter as printed in the warrant, and fund such appropriation transfer from the following funds. Free cash, $3,575,571.35. Premiums reserved for debt, general fund, $444.65. Maritime Center Rental Revolving Fund, $108,105. Water Enterprise Retained Earnings, $797,583.10. Premiums reserved for debt, Water Enterprise, $6,216.90. Sewer Enterprise Retained Earnings, $296,339.86. Premiums reserved for debt, Sewer Enterprise, $1,619.14. Transfer Station Enterprise Retained Earnings, $173,612.26. Premiums reserved for debt, Transfer Station Enterprise, $432.74. Waterways Enterprise Retained Earnings, $31,760.38. Premiums reserved for debt, Waterways Enterprise, $390.62. Widows Walk Golf Enterprise Retained Earnings, $28,179. Dewatering Heating System, from the annual town meeting from April 2019, Article 3P, $88,000. And authorize the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, to borrow the sum of $17,467,000 in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Subsection 7 and 8, or any other enabling authority for the purposes as indicated in the printed warrant, and further that the Select Board are authorized to apply for grants, gifts, or donations for the purposes of this vote from federal, state, or private sources. And the said Select Board are hereby authorized to accept such grants, gifts, or donations on behalf of the town, and that the amount of the authorized borrowing shall be reduced by the amounts of grants, gifts, and donations received prior to any such borrowing.
Do we have a second for the motion? Motion is seconded.
Why isn't that fixed? Hear that all the time, and that is why we're here. $22 million, and I don't remember who said it, but if you look at a budget, you can show someone's priorities. So I do want to highlight a few in here that I think are important for us to realize. $3 million to replace water mains. We're looking at approximately two more miles of water mains to be replaced in town. We were at a meeting, talking to other folks in Plymouth County. There are towns with groundwater and other water issues, and some of those other towns will not replace an inch this year. And over the last 10 years or so, we're looking at close to 15, almost 20 miles. Up on Maple Street, $3.3 million for a new storage tank for water. Again, both to help with quality, because you get to use that water that comes down, but also for water pressure and other issues there. Also, when you look down this list, I hope you see things that say year four and year 10. Why? Because members of this board, the Advisory Board, Capital Plant, had a plan set years ahead, and we've been sticking to it. And so we said deliberately go through and make sure these things are done, and done correctly, and done year after year. And lastly, I would like to point out the $2.2 million for step one, for the design and engineering of the North Situate Sewer Expansion. Yeoman's work has been done by DPW, Planning Board, Zoning Board, every other different board over the last five to 10 years, getting us to the point where we're looking at fixing some of those issues that we will have the capacity to bring sewer to North Situate. And this is a commitment from us to make sure that this expansion will get done. It is coming, and we're going to be prepared to have that engineering and design done. And the Select Board approves this motion four to zero.
Thank you. Next, I'd ask for the recommendation of the Capital Improvement, Capital Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Planning Committee voted to recommend unanimously all but four items on the capital plan, all but three items. The three items that we held were the science lab upgrades, which were motion to recommend of five to one. The Situate Harbor dredging, motion to recommend, five to one. And the electric ride-on mower, motion to recommend, five to one.
Thank you. To be clear, there's been a majority vote to support the entire plan. Is that correct?
Majority vote to recommend, yes.
Yes, thank you. Next, I would ask for the recommendation of the Advisory Committee. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time tonight. Not to belabor this, understanding brevity, but your Advisory Committee also met with every department. Please understand this is a five-year rolling capital plan. There's even a rating system created by the state that we comply with, that once a certain plan hits a certain level rating, that's when it becomes viable and considerable for this immediate year. We voted in favor unanimously for this plan and hope it does succeed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is there any questions, discussion relative to the capital improvement plan as set forth in Article three? Seeing no one at the mics, we'll proceed to a vote. Because borrowing is involved, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the Selectmen's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Moving now to Article four, which is the town budget.
When we call it in July, usually we call it July, and after a hold, that's the hold.
Say again, please. First of all, come to a microphone, please, and identify yourself.
Every other town meeting I've gone to...
I'm sorry, sir. Would you please...
Oh, all right. Scott Greenbound, 40 Damon Road.
Thank you.
Every town meeting I've gone to, when we got into this item, every individual letter is asked for a hold. That wasn't done tonight. I have three holds.
If you have an item that you'd like to discuss...
Yes.
We did not go through the hold process. We're going to do that with the next article, but if you have questions or concerns on any of the items, now is your time to speak about them.
All right, thank you. Item E, Oceanside Seawall Phase Four, $4 million of borrowing. It's time that we have a real conversation about the funding mechanism for foreshore protection. This town is going to see half a billion to three-quarters of a billion dollars worth of foreshore protection articles coming in front of it within the next 10 to 15 years. The people that benefit the most from that foreshore protection are the ones that live right on the seawalls, and also the business section on Front Street. We need to understand that that borrowing can't be evenly split among the 9,000 residents to houses in this town. There needs to be some type of betterment program to pay for this, because this is going to drive our taxes up by $6,000 or $7,000 a year, based on what the school is. So I can't support spending another $4 million on a piece of seawall until we figure out how we're going to fund it. I know this is an uncomfortable situation, an uncomfortable question, but it hasn't come up yet, and it is going to be very important. I mean, even, you know, I just want to bring that out in front.
Okay. Here's what I'm going to suggest. Since you have questions on two others...
Yeah.
Why don't you identify what those are? We'll pull those out, we'll vote on the remainder, then we'll go back and we'll have a discussion on each of them. I think that's the...
That's the normal process.
Best way to do it. So what are the other two?
It's going to be F and I.
What was the last one?
I.
Okay. So we have EF and I, correct?
That's correct.
All right. What I'm going to ask the meeting to do is we're going to put EF and I aside. So you should understand the motion to be to approve the capital plan with the exception of EF and I. Then we'll go back and we'll have a discussion on EF and I, and vote each of those separately. So is there any further discussion on the motion as a whole, other than those three items? No one being at the mics, we'll call for a vote. Again, the vote will be to approve the capital plan, except items E, F, and I. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. All right, now we will go back. We'll have a discussion first. I think you've covered part of your issue on item E. Is there any more you'd like to say on E?
No, that's just an overall thing, and...
I'm going to ask if there's discussion from anyone else with respect to item E, Oceanside Seawall Phase Four, on that item. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, we will take a vote on item E, which is $4 million of borrowing for Oceanside Seawall Phase Four. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted clarification. Is that 4 million? Is that construction, design, engineering? What are we looking at? What are we looking at?
Could we get an answer on that question, please?
That project's all designed, that's all construction money.
All construction. And I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself, Mary Ellen Schloss, 50 Mainlet Road.
Thank you. Any further discussion with respect to item E, Oceanside Seawall Phase 4? There being none, we'll take a vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. The borrowing is approved. Let's move now to item F, forshore protection.
All right. $200,000 for forshore protection. I assume this is repair work? Repair work? Corrective.
Yes, it's to be small repairs, engineering, if we needed things like that.
Well, unfortunately, right now, after this weekend, we have well over $200,000 worth of work that needs to be done on Lighthouse Road. So I think this is grossly underestimated, and we, you know, that's just a small section of the town. We should be allocating more money to make more repairs, so we don't have to do as many big capital projects, because we're behind on the maintenance. We're doing this at the school system. We did this recent, you know, we just voted for it, and we started that, I don't know, three, four, or five years ago. And I think we should be allocating more money for that. Since I didn't start as a motion, I'm not going to suggest a fund, but I would recommend that next year we come back with a realistic number of how much we're going to spend there. Otherwise, we're just dipping into free cash or emergency funds.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on item F, forshore protection?
Just for the meeting's information, there's another $200,000 in the operating budget for repairs and maintenance of seawalls. We had two issues with the seawalls from the past storm. Our estimate to fix those is $132,000.
Okay. We will move to a vote on item F, forshore protection. Unless there's any further, any further discussion on item F? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? No nays. It's a unanimous vote. Next item, sir, item I, townwide facilities planned year four.
All right, Scott Greenbound, 40 Damon Road. Basically, this sounds like a planning process. That's consultants, that's no building, or is it actual repairs?
Mr. Boudreaux.
This is actual repairs to buildings. It's on the website. Several years ago, a town meeting directed us to come up with a facilities plan. We did, and we're funding that plan every year.
All right, then, that just clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item I, townwide facilities planned year four? There being none, we'll proceed to a vote. This also requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It's a unanimous vote. With that, we'll move to Article 4, and I entertain a motion for Article 4 from Ms. Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate $97,7235 and transfer from the Gulf Enterprise Fund, $70,521; from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund, $343,383; from the Water Department Enterprise Fund, $540,449; from the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund, $249,764; from the Waterways Enterprise Fund, $205,795; from the Debt Premium Reserve, $1,581; from the PEG Access Cable Revolving Fund, $229,097; from the Wind Turbine Revolving Fund, $200,000; from the Solar Array Revolving Fund, $200,000; from the Septic Loan Fund, $12,348; from the Opioid Stabilization Fund, $104,106; and from the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Reserve, $53,930, totaling $99,218,209, to the General Fund for the purpose of funding personal services and expenses for town operations as may be necessary for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion is seconded. Ms. Curran.
Thank you. Just a few notes, as the Select Board reviewed requests from our department leads, as we do annually, it became increasingly evident that as a town, we have approached a time when our resources are not keeping up with the demands of our infrastructure and our service delivery needs. The fiscal pressures we face include rising health care and pension liabilities, rising material costs, and union contract negotiations where providing a competitive salary is critical to retaining and obtaining the best candidates throughout our town and school personnel. The Select Board recognizes these fiscal pressures that are upon all of us as consumers and taxpayers, that, and as a result, we did not approve all of the positions that came before us this year, and we did that as a means to provide a little bit of relief to us, to all where possible. Some of those positions that were requested, that we were unable to fill, included on the town side, six police officers, two DPW staff positions, and two additional library positions, just to name a few. However, in this budget is an additional staff member at the Council on Aging, an Assistant Director role has been requested to ensure the programming and services delivered there can continue to strive. This operational budget was carefully reviewed, balancing service level demands with limited increases, and scrutinized to ensure we continue to support our town staff, public safety, and critical infrastructure in forshore protection repairs, maintenance, and upgrades. And the Select Board recommends approval of this motion by a vote of 4 to 0.
Thank you. Ask for the recommendation of the Advisory Committee. Ms. Rousseau.
Thank you. As Mara said, this is a very challenging year, but this, what is before you is fairly pretty much a level services budget, level services, not level funded. And there were a number of requests for new positions that were not able to be approved. We were helped in our planning by lower, slightly lower than anticipated increases in the health benefits, and state aid gave us a bit more than we anticipated. Our regional school assessment was slightly lower than expected. So we have to thank the team for conservative estimating that helped us out a bit this year. We have to say, though, that we will continue to be challenged by all of these issues, by the growing needs of the town, by the increasing population that we have, with the ongoing needs to address the rest of the aging infrastructure. Everyone feels that we've let things go for a long time, and we're slowly but surely bringing things up to where we believe they should be. And we also are challenged, like all of us individually, with the fact that we have continued inflation, and yet we are held to the 2.5% increase that we are mandated to live within, outside of any overrides. So with that, I will say that the Advisory Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before we proceed to a vote on the budget, we will go through, the process will be, I will go through budget section by budget section. If someone wants to discuss, has questions on any particular section of the budget, just say hold. We'll put that issue aside. We'll have a separate discussion and vote on that issue. Those items that are not held, we will vote on together. So I'll go through the budget as follows. Please let me know if you want to hold an item. Town administration. Advisory Committee. Reserve Fund. Finance Director, Town Accountant. Assessors. Treasurer Collector. Information Technology. Tax Foreclosures. Cable TV. Town Clerk. Planning, Community Development. Property Liability Insurance. Police. Fire. Combined Public Safety Dispatch. Shellfish. School Department. Have a hold on the school department. Regional School Assessment. Public Works. Facilities. Snow and Ice. Streetlights and Beacons. Board of Health. Council on Aging. Veterans Agent. Commission on Disabilities. Facts Substance Abuse Program. Library. Recreation. Beautification. Historical Buildings. Debt and Interest. Plymouth County Retirement. Workers' Compensation. Unemployment Benefits. Unemployment Insurance. Contributory Group Insurance. Federal Taxes. Okay, we have one hold on the school department. We will take a vote now on all of the other items except the school department, which we'll hold for a separate discussion shortly. Any discussion on any of these items? No one at the mics asked for a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of approval of the budget, accepting the school budget, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It's a unanimous vote. We'll move now to the school budget. I think someone had a question on the school budget. Gentlemen on my ray.
Good evening. Mark Bissell, 28, Captain Village Field Lane. First of all, I want to say thank you for the great data and packet you put together. This is hugely helpful information. And my question's on page 26, around the curriculum. There's a big swing in the mathematics curriculum, as well as science, and I'm also curious about reading. Could somebody just address what those accounts for those big swings in the budgetary items for those rows, please?
Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you. It's an excellent question. Two years ago, we started a five-year curriculum review that hadn't been done in the district when we took over as leadership. And now we've planned out, kind of like the capital plan, five years in advance on what curriculum that we need to revise and update. We found that in some disciplines, we had textbooks from the '70s that needed to be replaced. So you'll see that each year, we focus on a different content area, K through 12, to revise either curriculum, textbooks, software, and support for those areas, including curriculum. And over three or four, five years, then those numbers should go down, but we have to catch up, so that's what we focus on.
Got it, thanks. On the reading line particularly, is any impact on K through 3 reading in that decrease?
Yeah, all indicators, our literacy has gone up considerably in the two years. And that money that we got a few years back, I think smartly, we used one-time fee, because we hadn't had a literacy program in Situate for decades, believe it or not, in K through 3. We started that, we used Esser money, which was about $300,000. We didn't use our operating budget for that program, and it's paying dividends already. So yes, it is working.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions or discussion on the school budget? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of approving the school budget as presented in the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Majority vote. We move now to Article 12, which is a community preservation article, or community preservation projects. Do we have a motion? Ms. Conley.
Well, that moved quickly. I move that the town hear and act on recommendations from the Community Preservation Committee, the CPC, on the fiscal year 2025 community preservation budget, and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, the Act to appropriate and/or reserve the sums of money as indicated below to meet the administrative expenses and all other necessary and proper expenses of the CPC for fiscal year 2025, for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, for the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use, for the acquisition, preservation, and support of community housing. Appropriations for the items below are to be expended first from any existing reserves to the purpose of such item, then appropriated from community preservation FY 2025 estimated revenues, with any access to be appropriated from community preservation unreserved funds unless otherwise specified. All such sums are appropriated, are further to be expended, and subject to all of the terms and conditions of the applications regarding such projects filed with the CPC and the votes of the CPC regarding approval of such items. Number one, $284,381 from community preservation 2025 estimated revenues to be reserved for the creation and support of community housing consistent with the Act. $284,381 from community preservation FY 2025 estimated revenues to be reserved for the acquisition and preservation of historic resources consistent with the Act. $284,381 from community preservation FY 25 estimated revenues to be reserved for acquisition and preservation of open space consistent with the Act. $71,095 from community preservation FY 2025 estimated revenues for administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. $261,801 from community preservation 2025 estimated revenues for payment of debt relevant to the athletic field renovation project, voted as Article 12, Annual Town Meeting, April 2019. $1 million for community housing, supported access to independent living, home at Countryway, 809 Countryway. $1,000, $1,957,123 for recreation, the high school tennis court construction. And finally, $22,884 for historic resources for the Bailey Ellis House Restoration Part 2. We consider the community preserv.
We need a second for the motion.
I'm sorry.
Is there a second? Motion is seconded. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'll be brief. We consider the Community Preservation Committee to be among the more important in town, because it allows to do us those things that we probably wouldn't otherwise be able to do. You pay for it through a surcharge on your property taxes, but I can assure you, since the inception of CPC, the money has been very well spent. I'll just point out to you that one of the items on the CPC agenda tonight is the community housing project. And I will say that CPC, not just here in Situate, but many cities and towns across the Commonwealth, have found it difficult to spend and to use community housing funds. We've been successful with Lawson Green. We've done other projects that have been beneficial to the housing that we have in town, for the people who need it, and this is a particularly worthy item, and it is a lot of money, but I will say, I think the town would be very proud to do it. So the Select Board voted 4 to 0 in favor of the community preservation projects, and I thank the committee for all their hard work.
Thank you. For town meeting to vote on these, it's required that we have an affirmative recommendation from the Capital, Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Finley, or someone from the committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Skylar Chek. I'm the CPC Vice Chair. I'm stepping in for our Chair, Mr. Finley, tonight. I just want to add that since the town adopted the Community Preservation Act in 2002, approximately $25 million has been raised through the annual tax levy. In that town. In that time, the town has also received an additional $11 million in matching funds from the state, which is about a 44% return on our tax dollars. This funding has resulted in significant examples of preservation of our town's historical resources, the acquisition and protection of hundreds of acres of open space, investment in community housing, and construction of recreational projects enjoyed by our residents without putting additional pressure on the town's annual operating budget or capital improvement funds. This year CPC approved three applications for annual town meeting. The first four items of this article are administrative items required under state law. Items one to three are the required 10% set-asides for community housing, historic resources, and open space. Item number four is a budget for CPC administrative expenses. This represents 2.5% of estimated revenues. State law allows 5% to be set aside, but the Situate CPC never spends that much, leaving more money available for actual projects. Item five is the CPC's annual reduction of the debt for the high school athletic fields project that was approved at the town meeting in 2019. This year's amount is $261,801. The next three items are the three projects that CPC approved this year. Item number six is a request for $1 million for a supported access to independent living home. This request is for the creation of affordable housing at 809 Country Way, which is an existing 8,000-square-foot office and warehouse building located in North Situate Village. The applicant, Sail Home, which is a subsidiary of the nonprofit South Shore Support Services, was formed by parents and supporters of adults with intellectual developmental disabilities with the vision of creating supported community living that includes housing, employment, and socialization. The project includes four residential units configured into one, two, and three bedrooms, accommodating up to eight individuals aged 24 and up, all with intellectual developmental disabilities and in need of affordable housing. Each bedroom, which is eight in this case, will add one affordable housing unit to the town's inventory. The development also includes a community center with a kitchen and a media room, a remote support monitoring office that will house a 24/7 call center to provide real-time support services to the residents and up to 50 individuals with disabilities in the surrounding community. It will also include a commercial office space for rental purposes. The development will serve residents whose families live within 30 minutes of Situate, including many who are from Situate. The timeline for the project includes securing funding this year, construction beginning in mid-2024, with the residential units ready for occupancy in 2025. The applicant has engaged an architect and an engineer and is currently working through the town's approvals process. The total project is $3.3 million, of which $1 million is requested of CPC. If approved, CPC funds would specifically cover the cost of construction of just the residential units. The remaining funding will be through private donations and grants, which the applicant is currently pursuing. The CPC voted unanimously to approve this request. Item number seven is a request for $1,957,123 for the construction of the high school tennis courts. This request is from the Situate Recreation Department for construction of five new courts to replace the existing four courts here at the high school. Currently, there are four existing asphalt courts. They've been cracking for years. They're all in disrepair. And they're actually considered unsafe for competitive play. In addition, the high school cannot host state competitions as the MIAA requires five courts, three for singles, two for doubles. As such, the community tennis courts at the old skate school are currently used for competition play by the high school. The CPC previously provided funding in both 2022 and 2023 for feasibility study and final design, engineering permitting, and bid documents. And an illustrated design plan is located on page 77 of your booklet. This request from CPC is specifically for the construction, which would include full demolition of the existing courts, pavement and fencing, regrading for the expansion of the site for five tennis courts so that we can have competitive play, new high-strength and long-lasting post-tension concrete pavement with an estimated lifespan of 50-plus years, new colored surfacing posts and nets, new fencing and gates, accessible walkways and bleachers for spectator seating, lighting, onsite stormwater infiltration, and landscaping. The reconstruction of the existing tennis courts will not impact the new high school track or the football field or the adjacent skate park or inline rink. The new tennis courts are intended for both school and community use. And they'll also create more opportunities for recreation department programming. These courts will also alleviate demand on the old Gates tennis courts, allowing for improved community use of those courts. The requested funding amount is based on the designer's estimate, which we received last fall when we received the application. It's not necessarily a guarantee of the actual construction cost, but we should find out soon. It is expected to go out for public bid for construction this month, and then we'll know the actual cost. If the funding is approved, construction is expected to begin this summer once funds are available on July 1st. And completion would be in spring of 2025. The CPC voted unanimously to approve this request. And lastly, item number eight is a request for $22,884 for the Bailey Ellis House Restoration Part II. This request is from the Situate Arts Association, who is the tenant of the historic house, which is owned by the town. Request is to cover shortfalls from the 2022 funding, which was for windows, tower, and door restoration. The door and window restoration work is essentially complete, and the additional funding is specifically for the tower restoration. Since 2022, additional damage was found and the high cost of staging to access that three-story tower and allow for its proper restoration has resulted in a funding shortfall. The complex nature of the work and the skills needed by specialized craftsmen is beyond the existing budget of the applicant. If approved, these funds will complete that restoration work. And in addition, the SAA also has $15,000 available should there be any other unforeseen cost overruns for this project. And lastly, the SAA oversees and manages the restoration work, which eliminates pressure on town staff who are managing other important work in town, which always means that they tend to request a relatively small amount of funding for their work because they're covering their costs and they are being very mindful that these are taxpayer dollars. The CPC voted unanimously to approve this request. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Next, we will get a recommendation from the Advisory Committee. Ms. Seidel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As you just heard in detail, there were eight items that were presented by CPC to the Advisory Board. The Community Preservation Committee provided an in-depth annual presentation to the Advisory Board earlier this year. We also have a committee member that sits on these recurring meetings and hears each of these presentations in detail. Of note, of these eight, the three projects, number seven and eight, are requests for continuation of funding for projects. We just heard about the high school tennis courts. So this piece of it is related to the construction piece of the five new courts. And the Situate Arts Center Association is asking for continued restoration funds for the historic Bailey Ellis House. Of particular interest to the Advisory Board was the project on the sale, the supported access to independent living for the construction of affordable housing for adults with intellectual developmental disabilities. The Advisory Committee was particularly impressed by the Sail Team presentation and excited about the project, specifically that Sail Home Situate could become a model for other municipalities on how to create innovative community developments for their constituents that have disabilities. And as noted by the Select Board, that we've not had a housing project supported by CPC funds in some time. We found all eight of these requests to be in compliance with the tenants of the Act and within the ability of the funds. The Advisory Committee therefore recommends approval of this article with a unanimous vote of 8-0 for items one through six and item eight, and a majority vote of 7-0 with one abstention for item seven. Thank you.
Okay. Now we will have any discussion, questions with respect to the items in Article 12. Gentlemen on my left.
Thank you. Tom Carr, 13, Waddleberry Lane. I had a question about the Sail project, number six. And I think the project, you know, for independent living for people is one of the noble goals that we have. But I was wondering, since we're partnering with other organizations, which seem to be bringing, you know, a significant amount of money to the project, how protected is the $1 million that Situate intends to put into the project from any problems that the other groups might have raising the funds?
So a couple of things. One is CPC's investment is in affordable housing units. Affordable housing units are restricted, so our funds would be protected in that regard. The applicant has a number of grant applications out right now. One is through the Housing and Urban Development. A few are through the state. In addition, they also have private funding as well as a loan, low-interest loan available should they need it if private funding and grants do not come through. So they're fully expecting to receive the $3.3 million needed. Plus, they also own the property, which is part of that $3.3 million cost.
So is the property owned free and clear?
Yes. Yes. The applicants are over here, so they're not.
Okay, no, I think that's fine. But it's just when you're entering into projects with different partners and we're putting up money, you know, for it, you just have to, you know, as a group, we're putting up our dollars for it. We wanted to make sure that the $1 million is protected in case there's some sort of default and issue, they can't build the project from there. So we wouldn't want to see the $1 million expended, you know, on and not get the affordable housing units due to something that's not within our control. Just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Lady at the center, Mike.
Anne Burbine, 10 Penny Chris Road. A case in point to Mr. Carr's question, whatever. When we did Lawson Green through CPC, we funded 1.2 million on affordable housing, and the rest was private. And that worked beautifully. There is no worry about what could happen as far as Sail is concerned. We have met with them. They have met with a number of different people. And I am sure that we are fully protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article, the motion under Article 12. Seeing no one at the mics, we'll bring this to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's a unanimous vote. Next article is 14, Affordable Housing Trust Small Grant Non-Deed Restricted Program. Ms. Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town further fund a small grant, non-deed restricted program as administered by the Affordable Housing Trust and to fund such a program transferring the sum of $25,000 from free cash.
Second. Second. Go ahead, Ma.
This is a second request of a much-needed program in town that the town meeting approved first, primarily in 2022. What this is, is funds for the Affordable Housing Trust to evaluate the needs of those citizens who live in non-deed restricted homes that need help making small repairs such as fixing windows and doors, floors, et cetera. There's a rigorous process, an application process that is followed and reviewed. All applicants are reviewed by the Affordable Housing Trust. In 2023, I am pleased to report that we had 24 applications. Eight of those applications were funded, and we expended $24,967 to those grantees. Five of the eight grants have been completed and paid. So I think that demonstrates that this is a need in our town, and this is a small gesture on behalf of us as taxpayers to help some of our residents in the greatest need. And the Select Board approved the passing of this motion by four to zero.
Thank you. Can we have the report of the Advisory Committee? Ms. Ferguson.
Not much to add. More explain the program. It's a successful program, and it helps those most in need. And there is an application process, so they are vetted. And the Advisory Committee voted 8-0 to support this.
Thank you. Any discussion with respect to Article 14, the Small Grant Non-Deed Restricted Program? No one's at the mics. We'll move to a vote. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It's a unanimous vote. Move now to Article 16, an amendment of the zoning map and the zoning bylaws. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator?[1594.46]
Yes, sir.
Point of information, please.
Sure.
Went on the internet...
First of all, would you identify yourself?
Yes, sorry. Peter T. Road, number four, Gannett Road.
Thank you.
Went on the internet, due to being on the mail address mailing for town meeting, printed out this document, or what looks like this document. I got this. It took me five hours. I have relatively new equipment, a brand-new printer that I had to remove, debug, clear out, whatever you want to call it. I'm not great at computers, but I'm good with the keyboard. I still can't get a facsimile of what's in here, and I think it would be very helpful and informative for the people that don't know this by heart to reference the page numbers in here. This booklet has all the page numbers. This one's kind of goofed up, and I think it would be helpful to the town meeting in general to do that. Is that something that could be implemented?
So your request in terms of what we would do tonight with Article 16 is what?
No, sir. What I request is every time somebody speaks about an article, a table, or anything like that, they refer to the page number. It's taken me almost half the meeting, actually more than that, to come up with where I'm supposed to be here. I'd really like to see what people are talking about.
And you're referring to the Advisory Committee book?
Yes.
All right, well, that's a reasonable request. If people want to do that, I'd welcome it. I can't require it, but I understand what your point is, and hopefully everyone heard you, and we'll see if we can get a better identifier of what we're talking about. Fair enough.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Now ready for a motion on Article 16.[519.01][519.01](applause)
Well, I'm sorry, I don't have the page number, but I think you can probably see that the zoning article is its own, page 41. And it's the biggest part of the book. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws as indicated in the printed warrant. Such amendment to additionally include the correction of a scrivener's error in said warrant, providing that the use table at section 420.1F of the zoning bylaw shall be amended, striking and replacing multi-family dwelling with multi-family dwelling, multi-family building. Is that clear?
Second. Go ahead.
The zoning article before you is clearly complex inasmuch as it's a lot of language. However, the planning board and the town planner, Karen Joseph, I have to thank her and thank the chair, Patty Lambert, for working very hard to deal with this very complicated subject. And I think anyone who reads the newspapers lately will know that this particular exercise that the state is requiring cities and towns within the MBTA communities have to comply with. There are towns that are choosing not to comply, and they're going to wind up in court. We chose a different path. We decided that when we really looked at it, that the changes that we were going to have to make were minimal, because we did a lot of zoning work, especially North Situate and the Green Bush a number of years ago. So we're very close to being in compliance. So our attitude was, let's see how close we can get, because we weren't willing to give up the grant money that the state could withhold from any town or city that doesn't commit to compliance. So we've made a real effort, and I thank them very much for all the hard work, and it's taken a long time to get to this point. But the Select Board voted four to zero in favor of these zoning changes, and I think that any questions you might have, the planning board is here tonight to answer your questions, so that you can be assured that we did take the right path.
Thank you. Just for reference purposes, the changes that are made here are red line strikeouts, start on page 80 of the Advisory Committee book and follow from there. So, and that's a red line strikeout, so you can see what the changes are. Next, we would ask for the recommendation of the planning board, who is required to hold a hearing and provide a recommendation to the town meeting.
Good evening. Whoops. The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, a public hearing was held on this article on January 11, 2024, and closed on the same night. On February 22, 2024, the board voted unanimously to support passage of the article at the April 8, 2024 annual town meeting. The changes in this article allow for the town of Situate to become compliant with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A of the Zoning Act for Multi-Family Zoning as of Right in MBTA Communities. Changes include, but are not limited to, replacing DHCD with EOHLC throughout the bylaw, adding definitions related to Section 3A MBTA Communities, adding two mandatory mixed-use districts, clarifying the pedestrian frontage zone, revising byright densities from 12 to 15 in three Green Bush sub-districts, allowing 10% affordable housing in the Village Centre and Neighborhood District, the VCN, for byright projects only, and eliminating commercial parking in the VCN mixed-use district for byright development only. The town desires to be a compliant MBTA community to ensure it has the right to apply for funds under multiple grant programs. The zoning changes are minor in nature, as the town previously approved multifamily and mixed-use development zoning in the VCN in 2019 and 2021. The planning board supports this article. Okay. So, we have a little speech here? No, no?
Thank you. And the recommendation of advisory, Mr. Dougherty.
Hello. Yeah, as you've heard, the town already did a lot of work on this years ago to change the zoning near public transportation. So when, you know, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, came out, it's like, man, we're almost compliant. We're just barely not. You can see, it's a lot of housekeeping and tax changes, at the risk of not being compliant and suffering the same fate as some other towns, who are getting sued, losing grant money for big projects, which is a coastal community we rely on. That didn't seem worth it for changes that were already kind of in line with the great work the planning board had been doing in these areas. These comments, to your point, are on page 52, is the advisory board's write-up. So we voted in favor of it. It just seemed like a common sense, good housekeeping, smart move.
Thank you. Discussion. Lady to my left at the mic.
Laura Giuliano, Clapperode. I, um, oh, I'm sorry. Did you say me?
Yes, ma'am. All right, I thought, okay. Why don't we hold that? We'll let the planning board give a further explanation of what they're doing here, and then we'll go to the discussion. Thank you.
Hopefully, this will take care of a lot of questions. In 2019 and 2021, after multiple visioning and public information sessions, Situate Annual Town Meeting voted for and created zoning bylaws that created the Village Centre and Neighborhood District, the VCN. The VCN districts and bylaws replaced the existing, at that time, the Village Business Overlay District. That zoning was passed in 2006 and allowed for mixed-use development in the Harbor, Green Bush, and North Situate. The VCN was adopted to allow more design standards, guidelines, and specific densities in the form-based zoning used for mixed-use and multifamily developments. Because of the town's early adoption of multifamily housing by the two commuter rail stations, the town needs to make minor housekeeping amendments to the zoning bylaws to be in compliance with the Massachusetts State mandated Section 3A for MBTA communities that allow for zoning of multifamily housing as of right. The town obtained a state-funded grant through the Mass. Housing Partnership with the consulted J.M. Golds and Associates in developing zoning bylaw changes to be in compliance with that law. A working group consisting of the town administrator, a member of the Select Board, myself as the planning board chair, and the planning board staff, met regularly with the consultant to propose changes that stayed as close to the existing bylaw, and Karen Joseph, our town planner, will explain further. Difficult stuff. There you go.
Thank you. The major changes for the bylaw include amending the density in three Green Bush sub-districts from 12 dwelling units per acre by right to 15 dwelling units per acre. These are the GWB, NRN, and GVC sub-districts, in order to achieve the unit capacity of 1,239 units required as Situate is a commuter rail community. Adding two mandatory mixed-use districts in North Situate Village and the New Driftway Transit Village in Green Bush, as these sub-districts already have ground floor commercial requirements and pedestrian frontage zone requirements, sidewalks, in order to take advantage of a 25% offset in the unit capacity to be zoned for, 217 units. Thus, Situate needs 1,022 units in other VCN sub-districts with a minimum density of 15 dwelling units per acre by right. We're changing byright development in the VCN sub-districts of Green Bush, GWB, NRN, GVC, and North Situate Outer Village to provide compliance with the law. We're going from 10% affordable units. We have to change the affordability from 15% or 20%, which we have for special permits, to 10% and no less than 80% of the area mean income. This is a reduction from the 15% currently required. We chose not to do a financial feasibility analysis, because there weren't very many consultants, and they were taking too long, so we just lowered the affordability in order to try to get the bylaw passed. The commercial parking requirement for ground floor commercial in the mandatory mixed-use districts has been eliminated for byright projects only. There's public or MBTA parking available in Green Bush and North Situate. The table of uses is being changed to allow multifamily buildings as of right in the GWB district. It was previously special permit. Definitions are being added for MBTA communities. The zoning map is changing slightly to have one parcel under all one ownership in North Situate be the same zone. Currently, it's two zones. We're clarifying the location of pedestrian frontage zones. We're changing all references from DHCD to EOHLC. We have several housekeeping changes in the table of uses. We're clarifying the purpose of the Green Bush Gateway District, and we're clarifying the applicability of site plan review requirements. I just want to say that these are the minimum requirements that the state is putting on us. We have tried to keep as close to the zoning bylaw that was previously passed as we could. We've had preliminary adoption review. We don't have anything in writing, but they said the zoning that we're proposing should meet their requirements. And I just wanted to also say, in previous town meetings, people, the people, the townspeople requested a red line copy and a clean copy in addition to what we're doing, so everybody could try to understand what was going on. I'm going to turn back to Patty Lambert for some more comments.
All the porters, I know. The MBTA Section 3A requirements are about zoning and non-development impermeable. Although the underlying purpose of the act is to create housing, Situate will remain in control over any future development through the zoning and the design standards which were developed and town-approved under the aforementioned VCN. The town is not responsible for creating infrastructure for new developments. That is the developer's responsibility. The town does not develop, developers develop. The consequences of noncompliance are that the state will withhold any funding available to the town through any grant process, and Situate has been the appreciative recipient of many of those said grants.
Okay, now we're ready. Questions and discussion.
Do you want to go first?
You're deferring?
Yeah, I'm deferring, Jim.
Okay. Mr. Heineman.
Just briefly, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, again, Lincoln Heineman, the chair of the Bylaw Review Commission. The Bylaw Review Commission reviewed this proposed warrant article and voted unanimously to recommend its passage.
Thank you. Now the lady on my left.
Thank you. Laura Giuliano, Clapperode. I might be late to the game here. My question really is first, is this a vote to accept these bylaws, or because this building in North Situate is a done deal, or is it a vote about the building in North Situate?
It's a vote about the regulations that cover the building.
So the town, my question is, has the town meeting already agreed that we're moving forward with this project?
It's not a particular project that we're dealing with. This has to do with what regulations apply.
So my personal, so I'm not sure I understand that answer completely. So we could disagree here that we don't accept this, and therefore, building will not happen in North Situate?
What you're here to vote for tonight is accept the changes into the zoning. I'm not 100% sure what building you're talking about, but projects will come into the planning board for individual parcels, and then we take them and we review them based on, hopefully, the zoning that you're going to approve tonight.
So, so changing the zoning laws, the slippery slope into building whatever a developer wants to build, well, let's take a look at the Driftway. I mean, we live in Situate because we don't want to live in Quincy. We moved from Milton because it's too busy, there's too much housing, there's too much everything. And when we keep talking about the requirements the state is putting on us, is only because we're accepting the requirements that the state is putting on us. And there are other communities that are rejecting that for the very reason is that they don't want to live in Boston, in Quincy, in Braintree, in Weymouth. We live in Situate, and we're already, we already built that morass of housing in, at the Driftway. It looks like, I don't know, I can't even tell you what I think it looks like. I don't think that should happen in North Situate. North Situate, I think it shouldn't happen at all, but now it should not continue. And so I say that if we accept these zoning bylaws to allow the town fathers to move forward with the building construction, I think that is the wrong way to go, and it's ruining our town. The T doesn't have ridership. They are forcing ridership by building buildings next to the trains, so that they have ridership. They're building their own ridership. Attached to that is a federal government thing that's coming down to put more pressure on localities to change the structure of their communities, so that they look like small cities. And it's all about getting people to ride public transportation, and so on and so forth, and we don't have to accept that. And if tied to that is money, I would rather have a raise in taxes than to take the state money that they're dangling in front of us and forcing us to change the beauty of our town. So that's, that's how, that's what I wanted to say. I really don't understand whether what we're voting on here. I would vote against any more of this kind of construction, dense, multifamily construction, and vote against the change in bylaws that would allow that to happen.
Thank you.
Can I address that?
Karen?
Patricia McLean, Wade.
Karen, why don't you save it, and then maybe give an overview, okay? Yeah, if you can hold on, we'll get the yellow comments, then we'll see if we can address whatever's common. Yes, ma'am.
Patricia McLean, Wade, 695 Country Way. I agree that it's not a lot of fun to be held hostage by the state, so I agree very much with your sentiments. I have a specific question around this zoning, particularly around affordable housing. I know oftentimes when we do affordable housing, we, as a community, lose a lot of input into what the design and structure looks like. I did see a note in the proposal, and it looks like that is under control, but I just wanted to understand more about how that could be addressed.
Okay. Why don't you address, Karen, if you could address both the last two questions? This would be a good time to do it.
All right, so affordable housing is, we currently have affordable housing as part of our zoning bylaw, so any new project needs to have affordable housing component when it's over five dwelling units. As part of the changes we have to make to do MBTA compliance, we have to drop it to 10% for a byright project only, to be able to comply with the state requirements.
So my question is whether we lose control over what it looks like, because we hear about 40B, and the developers can come in and design wherever they want. I'm assuming that's not the case in this instance, but I'd like reassurance.
We have design standards in the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw was changed in 2019 and 2021 for Green Bush, 2019 for Green Bush, 2021 for North Situate, to add more design standards, so that there would be control over what the buildings looked like. And so the changes that we're making right now under this current zoning, you're already at 12 units per acre by right, 24 units per acre by special permit in Green Bush. In North Situate, you're already at 15 units per acre by right in the Outer Village, and 24 by special permit. So the incremental change for three sub-districts in Green Bush is going from 12 to 15.
I agree, and I hope we don't look like what Green Bush looks like now for part of it. But thank you.
I'm just going to restate something that I think goes to the previous speaker's concerns. North Situate is already zoned for multifamily units. That's not changing. As you heard, like, you know, 15 units per acre. So that's already there. This change to be in compliance with the state, like, it's very minimal, very, very minimal to these peripheral things and a lot of, lot of language changes. The reason you haven't seen this, like, Quincy-style development yet, I think is in The reason you haven't seen this, like, Quincy-style development yet, I think, is in large part to the fact that there's no sewer connection to North Situate yet. But this is not a huge zoning change that we're voting on tonight. Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Gentlemen, on my left.
Bernie Westerveld, 12 Harborview Road. Reading through the articles, I see a couple of referrals to parking, commercial parking and residential parking. I have noticed that in the newer areas in Green Bush, there is no guest parking. And it, can you clarify how the new zoning law impacts guest parking? Residential guest parking?
We're proposing to change the parking requirements right now.
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Parking requirements, we're only eliminating the commercial parking requirement for a buy right project only in the mandatory mixed-use district. Otherwise, it's the parking, residential parking has to be per the zoning bylaw.
You're not answering, my question, I'd like a more specific answer. If I'm going to go to North Situate in the new developments, what kind of guest parking can I expect according to the bylaws?
I really can't hear you very well, but in North Situate, you have the WPA parking lot, that's a public parking lot, and you have the North Situate commuter rail parking lot. In addition, when redevelopment comes, hopefully after sewer, they will have to build parking for the residential component of a new project.
So if I want to visit grandma who lives in an apartment in North Situate, I can shell out $4 for parking?
So there will be guest parking. There is parking requirements in the zoning bylaw. What we're moving out of the bylaw right now is that we're requesting commercial parking. It's not residential. Your residential is not going to change. There is plenty of parking in both North Situate and Green Bush if you take the MBTA lots and the public lots that are there. Is that okay? No?
That's not what I've seen happening in the new areas in Green Bush. If I visit people there, there is no parking in the newer buildings.
Well, we're learning. How's that?
All right, well, let's do this. I think the question boils down to, what changes does this bylaw, the article that's before the meeting right now, make in parking? Does it make any changes?
It just takes away a little bit of commercial parking for the mandatory mixed-use district. So let's say, for instance, there's a 3,500 square foot of commercial in a mixed-use building. They don't have to provide parking for the 3,500 square feet, which amounts to seven parking spaces. They still have to provide all the parking for the residential component, which depending, it's, you know, depending on the size of it, we're seeing the average numbers, you know, 40 spaces, 20 spaces, depending on how many bedrooms are required.
Yes, that's the best answer I can get. Thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
I pass.
Okay. Mr. Boudreau.
Just very quickly, I want to reiterate what Connor said about this is property that's already zoned, high-density mixed-use. There was a mention about the state dangling money. Just to give town meeting an idea, since 2018, the town of Situate has received more than $17 million from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in various grants and projects. The town of Milton was awarded a grant for seawalls. That grant has now been rescinded. The town of Situate is not in compliance with the MBTA. Of that $17 million, there is still $10 million that we have not spent and would be at risk, as well as other grants in the future. Earlier, we talked about seawalls. One of those grants was for $5.9 million for seawall construction. So we're not talking about small dollars, we're not talking about small grants, we're talking about significant amounts of money that the town of Situate is reliant upon for our capital projects. So I'd like town meeting to keep that in mind as you consider this article.
Thank you. Lady to my left.
Quick question. You say in North Situate, you can park at the T. Does that mean if I go visit somebody in North Situate, I pay for parking at the T?
Can someone answer that question? I think the question is, would there be parking available for?
Ms. Westerveld, if you go to North Situate and you go to visit somebody, you can park at the WPA, which is in front of the kiddie ramp. You can park at the MBTA. We're assuming that's going to be, I have no idea how that's going to work, but we also have parking all over North Situate. So it isn't like you will not have to, don't have to worry about that.
I was just curious, and so you're saying that adding stuff to North Situate, more buildings, et cetera, as we go along? You mentioned you could park at the T. But you've got to remember, you've got to pay to park at the T.
But also remember that within our zoning requirements, we have to provide parking for residents. And we do include, well, I guess, visitor parking. We all face the same issue all over town.
Further discussion. Lady to my left.
Yes, Mary Ellen Schloss, 50 Manlot Road. I just want to say, I think it makes a lot of, I think it's a very wise decision to pass this new zoning. They're pretty minor changes, and we are going to, you know, protect those many, many millions of grant dollars that we really, really need. And I mean, I, for one, I feel like I benefit from having the train in our town. I use it, and many other people use it. You know, we, I think we need to do this. It's very important for fiscal responsibility as well as a social good.
Further discussion. Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the proposed zoning change say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
I declare it a two-thirds vote. Which brings us next to Article 17. It gets easy from here on in, folks.
It does.
Which has to do with the wireless communication antennas. I think we're going to get a motion from the Select Board first. Ms. Cantwell.
Thank you for that recommendation for page numbers. This article could be found on page 53, redlined, and on page 197, the clean version. Great suggestion. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw sections 7, 3, 0.4, wireless communication antennas on utility poles as printed in the warrant.
We have a second. Have a second. Go ahead, Karen.
This article seeks to clarify the requirements that must be met before a new wireless antenna is installed in Situate. You'll see it's a very small tweak to the existing language, and it specifies that the planning board must provide a special permit. This came up because residents were concerned about the oversight and the location of small cell devices, especially new technologies. The planning board worked with residents to restrict where these devices could be installed, and I'm sure Patty will speak to this, but many of the location requirements are mandated by FCC and other agencies that are above our purview. And we can't limit what local permits can require. The Select Board agrees that clarifying this language will signal to the wireless companies that the planning board will be closely following and monitoring these applications. The board voted for one to support this article.
Thank you. Next, we hear from the planning board.
The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, a public hearing was held on this article on January 11, 2024, and closed on the same night. On February 22, 2024, the vote, in this, which is a full passage of the article at the April 8 Annual Town Meeting. The changes to this article allow for clarifications to the existing wireless communication antenna on utility pole bylaw. A clarification is proposed to show that a special permit from the planning board that meets all the requirements of a major site plan review is needed. This clarifies the discrepancy in the language where a special permit is talked about in one sentence and a site plan review in the next. A special permit is needed for these antennas. The planning board supports this article. This article requires a two-thirds vote.
Thank you. From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you. Comments on page 53? This isn't a policy change. It's not a procedure change. It's just good housekeeping, making the language more clear. We voted in favor unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Heineman for the Bylaw Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. By a vote of two to one, the Bylaw Review Commission recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Further comment from the planning board? All set. Gentleman in the middle, Mike.
Mr. Moderator, Pierce Road again, from 4 Gannett Road. I don't know what's in the original bylaw, because it doesn't make reference to much of anything here, but there are several things that are very important. I have some personal experiences dealing with this. One is that you must show that it does not interfere with any other radio equipment, and also that it would not cause a health problem or interference with anybody else's communications.
Thank you.
And we are aware of that and working on that. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
We are working on that. That's why zoning might have changed this bylaw.
Further discussion. There being none, go to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Unanimous, it's a two-thirds, I'm going to say it's a unanimous vote. Seven people can rise. Okay, we're going to go to Article 18, revolving funds. Motion, please.
Motion, Article 18. I move that the town amend the aquaculture revolving fund in Section 10260 of the Town of Situate general bylaws by striking the entirety of said text and replacing the same with the following. Aquaculture revolving fund, fund name, there shall be a separate fund called Aquaculture Revolving Fund. Revenues, the town accountant shall establish the Aquaculture Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund all changes for, charges for licenses and reporting related to aquaculture activities and all monies received from mitigation activities ordered by the Conservation Commission relevant to docks and similar structures.
Second. Have a second.
Oh, wait.
Further description.
Sorry, there's more. During each fiscal year, the Harlemaster and/or shellfish constable with approval of the town administrator may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Aquaculture Revolving Fund for costs incurred for aquaculture activities and expenses as required by mitigation activities ordered by the Conservation Commission. The Aquaculture Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1, 2020.
Okay, I'm sorry. Now we have it all. Now we'll have a second. And any explanation you want to provide at this point?
Yeah, sure. This article will amend, sorry, page 53, for those of you following in the book. This article will amend the Aquaculture Revolving Fund to allow the town to collect revenue related to fees and fines imposed by the Conservation Commission against owners of docks or other similar structures. The funds will be used to enhance the growth of shellfish beds, including reseeding recreational shellfish beds. The Select Board is recommending passing the motion. We voted four to zero in favor.
Thank you. Recommendation from the Advisory Committee, Mr. McQuigge.
The Advisory Committee voted on this, and we're in full support and voted unanimously eight to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Heineman for the Bylaw Review Committee.
Ditto. We recommend unanimously recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Any discussion on the article? Gentleman in the center.
John Burke, 57 Mary's Lane. As the article is written, it goes back to fiscal years, begin on or after July 1, 2020. My question is, and I'll give it to either of the committees that are presented, why are we going back three years? Are we capturing money that is there in the account, and we're using that money now? Or is this just an accounting abnormality?
Mr. Boudreau.
The fund already exists, so that's the date that the fund was set up. There's currently no funds in it. This amends the language for the fund. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 18? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's a unanimous vote. Move now to Article 19, amending the general bylaws on street sidewalks and public ways. We have a motion.
I move that the town amend the Town of Situate general bylaws, Section 30150, streets, sidewalks, public ways of general bylaws in subsection 1, handicap parking regulations on public and certain private ways. Subsection 2, parking in designated parking spaces prohibited by deleting $100 and inserting in its place $300.
Second. Motion is seconded.
Article 19 will allow the town to increase the handicap parking fine from $100 to $300 per violation, which is the maximum allowable handicap parking fine in Massachusetts. $100 per violation is too low. Neighboring towns have fines of $200 to $300. We think that the increase will serve as a deterrent to those who choose to park in a handicap parking space. We thank the Commission on Disabilities and the Traffic Rules Committee for bringing this to our attention. The Select Board is recommending passing the motion. We voted four to zero in favor.
Thank you. Advisory Committee recommendation.
The Advisory Committee supports this article. As a town with a growing population, yet not a growing parking availability, maintaining proper handicap access to those in need is of high importance. Advisory Committee recommends the approval of this article. The unanimous vote, eight to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Heineman for Bylaw Review.
The Bylaw Review Commission also recommends unanimous approval of this article, and I would just briefly say, we have two open spots on the Bylaw Review Commission, and if you're still here, you must care about the bylaws. So please put your application into the Select Board if you're interested.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the article? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Majority vote required. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We will move to the last article, Article 20, which is the local option acceptance of...
All right, we're all ready to go home, right? I move that the town accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5 and 54, and establish the minimum value of personal property subject to taxation at $5,000 of fair cash value on personal property accounts to be taxed beginning the fiscal year 2025.
Second. That motion is seconded.
Second? Yeah. The article proposes, oh, sorry, page... The article proposes, oh, sorry, page 55. The article proposes modifying the minimum value of personal property tax for businesses and second homes. Personal property generally includes tangible items that are not firmly attached to land or buildings and not considered real estate. So for example, merchandise, furniture, machinery or tools. Household personal property at a person's primary residence is exempt from personal property tax. However, household personal property located at second homes or businesses is taxable. The article will allow the Board of Assessors to exempt from taxation personal property that has fair cash value less than $5,000. In Situate, we have 1,300 personal property accounts totaling close to $747,000. 97% of our revenue is derived from the 380 largest personal property bills. There are over 380 bills under $5 per quarter, including 87 bills under $2.50 per quarter. The costs associated with sending quarterly bills under $5 are higher than the amount of revenue these bills generate. Neighboring communities modified their minimum personal property value to $5,000. That was Rockland, Hingham and Hanover, or even $10,000. That was Marshfield and Norwell. We thank Joe DeVito and the Board of Assessors for bringing this to our attention and recommending updating our bylaw. The select board is recommending passing the motion. We voted four to zero in favor.
Thank you. Advisory committee.
The advisory committee believes this to be a very logical step since the revenue collected from these low-value assets is less than the cost of billing. So we recommended approval with a unanimous vote of eight to zero. Thank you.
Any discussion with respect to Article 20? There being none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Now, hold on a minute, don't leave. Right now, Jim Cantwell is racing down Route 123 on behalf of Senator Mackey to recognize Marla Curran. I told him he's too late. He said he'll make alternate arrangements and it's kind of too bad we're going to miss him because along with the recognition that he has for Ms. Curran, he was also bringing the town $5.5 million for seawall construction. I'm going to look one more time to see what his ETA is. Give him one last look. 9:42, he's not going to make it. We call the meeting dissolved. We'll see Mr. Cantwell at another time. Thank you all for coming. Let's see you in three weeks for the school building project.